Now. Thank you, Olivia. Counselor Pringle, I apologize. I've got, I've got the name now. Alrighty, let's call this meeting to order. Is there any declaration of interest related in any item on committee of the whole agenda? Okay. We don't have any business or is there any business arising from those minutes? Delegations, we have Darlene Distefano. Did I get that right, Darlene? There you go. She's here to speak about solutions for attainable living and a request for financial support. So Darlene, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, County Council. I'm happy to be here. Just a really quick brief, I am the, the Chair and the Founder of Solutions for Attainable Living, which we call SAL for short. And our main focus, we have three initiatives being housing, healthcare, and employment. But our main focus is the housing, and that's what I'm here about today. So what we're looking at is doing a ARU, backyard ARU pilot project. And wanting to go out to the communities, basically every municipality, and be able to offer a presentation to residents. And basically what that involves is being able to provide the information on benefits, some of the drawbacks, some of the language to use, who to approach. Recognizing every municipality's bylaws are different, so where your neighbor or your friend in another municipality may very well be able to put what they want in their backyard, you may not. And there's many other variables that the homeowner really needs to recognize and understand. So if I can, I would like to try to share my screen. I've never done this before, so I could screw it up totally, but I'm gonna give it a whirl and see if this will play for you. I know you have it in your package. I don't know if it's had time to review, but I will try this and see. I don't know. Oh goodness, okay. Share, let me see. Oh, oh, okay, hang on. Let me try this again. Okay, can you see this?
Yeah, we can see that, Darlene.
Okay, thank you. I will now click that way.
The slides are advancing, but we're not hearing anything.
Oh, you're not supposed to hear anything. It's music in the background. So I can tell you very quickly as they go through. The introduction, this one, of course, is on the website, your website as well, showing the various ARUs and the opportunities for potential income. This one's a self-contained, knowing that an ARU is self-contained, meaning they have a bathroom, a kitchen, and a second entrance. That's another version, looking at doing a garage with a suite above the garage. So we are looking at backyard units, not in the house yet. Many different styles to choose from in the backyard homes, whether you are, whatever your preference is, basically. And why are we looking at this? Of course, it's less cost, less energy, and less expensive repairs. And less, that means less stress, which is a huge one. And helping people who need affordable housing, regardless of their age, moving down from a big home, less clutter, and less maintenance is what we're looking at. There's many benefits to an ARU, and you can read those as well afterwards. You have the PowerPoint too. But basically, we're looking at a lot of issues for affordable housing, which is thoroughly ignored. And aging in place is a really big one right now as well. And talking to a lot of seniors, I found that they they were not so trusting of people living in their house with them, but certainly were interested to learn more about a separate unit in the backyard where they could have a caregiver there, or they could live there and have someone else rent their house. Many benefits looking at from affordability, flexibility, security. Just the list goes on here as to why it's a great opportunity for seniors. There's a lot of special benefits to seasonal workers. I have spoken with a number of people in business. One of their biggest problems is housing for seasonal workers. That's a big issue. Benefits to families, as you can see, there's many of them with different risk populations. And business owners, again, there's a lot of value here in, in providing this to bring in community vibrancy. Affordable housing is sometimes misrepresented, and people don't really understand that thirty percent of your income before taxes is what's been considered affordable. So what's affordable for you may not be affordable for someone else. So if we're looking at affordable, affordable, which is for people who really have difficulties at the affordable housing spectrum, then we are really looking at something that is a lot less than what's available today. We are looking at prioritizing affordability. That's our main initiative. So the two options, being able to rent a portion of your yard to someone who owns an ARU already, or bringing in an ARU yourself and doing that in your backyard as well, renting out both. This is the reasons for the slow uptake. People were not educated. Public as well as municipalities were really not educated when it first was announced, so it's taken a while to get on, on the side there. What we can do here is the terminology, as I said, looking at guidance, insight, and discussion with regards to the ARUs. And it is very empowering when people understand and have the knowledge of what they can do. We can look at people wanting to get more involved in community engagement and enhancing a lifestyle and the community as a whole. So municipalities getting involved would be joining us in our presentations for the building sector, which would be an advantage. Absolutely. And the municipality providing space for us to do that. Your own website has your own statement of affordable housing and why it's thoroughly needed and how to increase it. So we are looking for your support in this pilot project, that you have a copy of the budget. And I'll speak to that in a second. I believe that that's, we are at the end. That was faster than me trying to talk to you about it. So, there we go. Now I have to find you again. Oh gosh, how do I get back to that? There we are. Thank you. So, so I did send you the copy of the projected budget. Just in reviewing that, this was prepared for both Bruce and Gray County. However, we are at your door first. And looking at this, we would be looking at the bare minimum that we could even do this with, within Gray County alone would be twenty-five thousand. That would cover the immediate expenses that are required. And then we would be looking at, actually thirty would be better, but twenty-five, we can make it work. And then we would go over to Bruce and ask for them as well. If they don't want to, then we would be only promoting this in Gray County. It's just a matter of, of numbers and costs to do something. So this is what we're asking for, and the bare minimum will cover the cost of a trailer. It will cover the cost of upgrading to the website that needs to be done that I can't do. And looking at some of the hosts that we need to host the prototype that we are having built for us and on loan to us for a year. And from there, we can look at purchasing it later if we're so inclined and we're able to do so. And then it also would be covering some of the, the data that people come to these meetings and what we learn from what they want and what their needs are in the community as well. So basically, that's it. Questions?
Well done, Darlene. You had ten minutes and it took you nine and a half. So well done. Are there any question, are there any questions from council about the presentation? Okay, you must, oh, Counselor McQueen, go ahead.
Well, so you, Mr. Ward, if Scott has a brief opportunity to speak a little bit, what is available or what can be done? Because I know that it does vary a little bit, and I know changes to the different planning acts, but I know that ARUs are permitted in most cases, but I know there was maybe some clarity. I don't know if Scott has an opportunity just to bring up grief part of it, because I think it's a really good thing. It's a great opportunity for, to create housing, and I just think more and more people need to know about it, because I think it, it is one solution of, of many that does go a long way for creating housing.
Well, I would, I would, I would suggest that if, if council wishes a report from staff, then we need some direction to do that. If someone's prepared to, to do that. In, in, in the meantime, are there any other questions for Darlene? Okay, not seeing any. I will thank you, Darlene, very much for the presentation. Clearly, you, you covered all the bases. There's no further questions. So we thank, we thank you very much for your time today.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
Bye now. Okay. Consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that require, any counselors would require removed for further discussion or direction? Not seeing any. I'll ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Counselor Dickert? Counselor Pringle, would you like to second that? Thank you very much.
Excellent. Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to items for direction and discussion, the first is a report here from Rebecca Denard, Manager of Climate Change Initiatives. She is going to speak to a report on Energy Conservation and Demand Management Plan. Someone care to move that, please? Counselor Carlton and Counselor Nielsen. Rebecca, welcome.
Thank you. Glad to be here again. Could I get the slide? Nope. There we go. There we go. Okay, thank you very much for having me back again today. I'm going to be talking about our Energy Conservation and Demand Management Plan. So according to Ontario Regulation 50718, municipalities are required to create an energy conservation demand management plan every five years. And this plan looks both back, so are reviewing our energy performance from 2018 to 2023, and then looks forward forecasting energy performance from 2024 to 2028. So that's the time period that we're going to be looking at in this report. The regulations require that administrative offices, cultural facilities, EMS stations, transport depots, and storage facilities, those are the types of buildings that are required to be included in the report. We've decided to extend that to include our long-term care facilities and our multi-unit residential buildings for social having, due to those having such a significant contribution to our energy portfolio, it wouldn't really be a, a complete report without looking at, at those ones. For the moment, we're, we're not including the single-family residential units and things like fleet or outdoor lighting, but we may consider, oh my goodness, what's going on there? There we go. We may be considering those as we, as we go forward, particularly as we potentially are electrifying our fleet and then the elect, the charging of the vehicles is going to impact the energy performance of the buildings. We're not there yet, but something that we're keeping in mind for the future. Oh, and I should mention as well that, that my colleague here in Adagisla is here. He has really done all of the heavy lifting, getting the data together for this report. So anything sort of specific building, specific data points, he's, he's the man for, for those questions. So he will be able to help me out if there's anything that comes up that we, we need to talk about. Okay, so this is the, this is an overview of an energy type by building. And as you can see, the, the blue there is the long-term care, which is a significant part of, of our portfolio. And then the orange is the social housing, which is really just the multi-unit buildings. So these graphs, I hope, make it clear as to why we included those in the ECDM. They are really a majority of our energy usage, as well as our energy costs and our greenhouse gas emissions. So we wanted to put them in the, in the plan so that we're planning for our, our largest, our largest buildings. Okay, and this one actually is, this is a lot of, a lot of data in, in one small table. And I'm wondering if I should go grab my it doesn't have my notes view, but I'm just gonna grab my notes, because they're not on this view. There we go. Just wanted to make sure I, I cover all the points that I wanted to get out of this one. So the first thing to look at is those blue, the, the numbers in blue there, which is, this is an apples-to-apples comparison of the buildings that we, the thirty-eight buildings that we owned and operated in 2018, and we continue to operate in 2023. So as you see in those numbers, our, our electricity, natural gas, energy intensity, and GHG emissions are all showing a small decrease when we're looking at the same set of buildings. Now, because we added some buildings in that time period, our overall emissions portfolio is, is going up. So we added new buildings, some of them we bought, like Sidnum Campus, some of them we acquired, things like Golden Manor, Albert Place. Some things were built, like the Craigleaf EMS station. And there are a few buildings that were not, we didn't have complete data in 2018. So those data sets were added to the 2023 numbers. So it's sort of showing an increase, but we, you know, the building was there all along. We just didn't have the data for 2018. So when you add up all of those buildings, we're now showing a slight increase in, in those statistics, because we've added the floor area. One spot to pay attention to is the energy intensity. So this is how much energy the building uses per square foot. And if you look at that, it's, it's actually going down. So the new buildings actually were less energy intensive than, than our standard portfolio. Because when you add them in, we get more of a, of an increase, decrease in the energy intensity. And this is probably because the, the buildings that have, are the, have the biggest energy intensity are the long-term care homes. They have to be heated, they have to be cooled, they have to be ventilated twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. They are quite energy intensive. And the buildings we added, things like Sidnum Campus, EMS spaces, they don't have that level of energy intensity. So that's why the energy density of those new buildings is not, is, is sort of overall, it's bringing down our average, which is a good thing. Energy price, let me just make sure I'm covering. Right, so you'll see that the energy costs there in the bottom. They went up even though our consumption went down. And energy pricing is notoriously complicated. It's due to like time of use, peak demand, global adjustment, variability in the market. There's just lots and lots of different things that go into energy pricing. So it's, it's, it's quite sort of complicated to figure it all out. And different types of our buildings are on different costing models. So it's not an easy sort of one-to-one calculation of why is the energy cost going up? But generally, energy prices increased over this time period, so we're seeing that reflected in our, in our costs. And they would have increased, you know, if we're not working to decrease our consumption, then their costs would have increased even, even more, but sort of trying to figure out exactly how much more is, is quite a, quite a task. So we're, we're just gonna leave it at that, you know, we're, less consumption means we're gonna be paying less. But the energy price goes up, which is something that's quite sort of beyond our control. Okay, let's go to the next one. So this is the first plan that is aligned with our climate plan. The previous ECDM was created in 2019, which was prior to the adoption of going green and gray. So this addition of the plan is really trying to align some of the actions that we have outlined in this plan with the ones that are in going green and gray. The ones that we're highlighting are here are energy-efficient new buildings, retrofitting existing buildings, solar installations, developing a municipal climate lens, and the culture of conservation. And these actions will contribute to corporate reduction targets, which we have outlined in Going Green and Gray, which is twenty percent reduction by 2026, which will be, you know, sort of midway through this plan, forty percent by 2030, which will be just after this plan is complete. This plan finishes in 2028, as a reminder. And then fifty-five percent by 2035, seventy percent by 2040, and then we're looking to achieve net zero for our corporate operations by 2045. All right, so this is kind of showing how we're doing in comparison to those targets. I'm sorry, it's a little small for you on the screen. The blue line is our targets of, of reduction that we're trying to see. And this is not for the entire Gray County corporate portfolio. It's only for the forty-seven buildings that we have included in the CCBM plan. So we're not including fleet, we're not including streetlights, we're not including waste. There's lots of things that aren't in this, in this profile. So the line in red there is the, is what has happened so far since 2018. And you'll see that there is a, a small increase as we showed in the previous chart, and that's because of the adding of the new buildings. The green, or maybe it's gray, I think it's gray on your screen line is the this is the business-as-usual scenario. So if we carry on with what is outlined in the current capital plans, we achieve about a three percent reduction by 2028. I'm suggesting that there's, that there's a really opportunity to bend that curve more quickly. Because the, the business-as-usual plan sort of includes buying into existing technologies without making any changes. So it includes, we're just, you know, continuing to switch out gas boiler for gas boiler, continuing to just go on the same trajectory. Whereas I think we have the opportunity here to, as things reach the end of their life, to actually make those changes and try, try to curve that, that line down more, more quickly during the next five years that this plan covers, and that will get us closer to being on track and means that, you know, there'll be less sort of a hill to climb or a hill to ski down at that, you know, after this, this period. Yeah. All right, so this is what we're looking at, so suggesting for what we need to achieve for 2028. The first, the first part of the, this table is really about understanding, getting a better understanding of how our buildings are operating. Actually, the first one is, is just having, having all of our new builds be net zero, we're net zero ready. And this, this just makes sense. We are, we're on track to do this. If we're designing a new building, we should make sure that it's net zero ready. It's the easiest time for that work to happen. It means we don't have to retrofit it later. It means that it will be starting to be more efficient and save us energy costs right from the beginning. So that, that isn't, is an easy one to, to do, I hope. Then the next ones, it's about, it's about understanding our buildings. So modeling and analyzing them in Red Screen, this is a program that lets us look at the utilities. It lets us do things like normalize for weather data. So we understand, did the consumption go up because it was a cold winter, or did it go up because there's actually something happening in the building that we should be aware of? Getting building, uh, energy audits in our buildings will also help us understand what is happening on the energy front and start to, to point us towards that modeled net zero pathway. So that's being able to look at all of our buildings and understand what would we need to do to this building to get it to be, hit that net zero by 2045 that we're, that we have outlined in the plan. So it's not sort of putting it as far as it's in a plan, it's in a budget, but it's modeled out in terms of this is what, what would need to happen. And it can align with current end-of-life things in our asset management plan. So we know that we know when things are going to start to, to break down, and we need them to be replaced. So we can put those, those pieces together, so that when we are replacing things, we're replacing them with things that are going to get us closer to net zero, rather than just replacing like-for-like and not really thinking about it. So we're gonna get those pathways all, all sorted out by the next ECDM plan. And then the percent of emissions reductions we need by, by 2028. So if we can get a thirty percent reduction, this means we'll be on track for that forty percent reduction by 2030 for these buildings. So that's, that's sort of putting a number to it, to what we need to be to stay on track. Thirty-five percent of retrofit projects completed. So this would keep us on track to retrofit all existing buildings by 2045. And when we're talking about these retrofits, it's not like we're going to do them, it doesn't usually make the sense to do the one building at a time, unless there's funding. It's not like we start with one building and we do this one to net zero, and then we do this whole building and that whole building. It's more that they are all gonna get better over time as budget allows, as, as things reach their end of life, they can be replaced with better options. It's, it's more feasible to do it that way than sort of like doing the buildings one at a time, getting them a hundred percent of the way there. Looking at solar as well, we have an ambitious solar target of having seventeen percent of existing buildings with solar by 2030. So this would be by 2028, this would be about twelve point five percent of the building, so six out of the forty-seven in this plan having, having solar. And there's also a megawatt goal associated with that. So we need about one point two five megawatts of solar on our buildings by 2028 to stay on track to meet the targets we've outlined. All right. So we're already doing a lot of this work. This is underway. The new buildings, Rockwood, that some of you were at a meeting at for this morning, this will be net zero ready. It will have a huge impact, because those, those long-term care homes have such a, a high energy intensity, that having one that's very new and sustainable and, and well, well on its way to net zero is gonna really have a large impact on our overall performance. We're also working on a series of, of the new paramedic bases to try and get them to be all net zero design as well. There's a, there's a series of them planned for the next few years, and we're you know, do a really great job on the first one, and then learn iteratively and make them better and better as we go. And we're also looking at a, a new build in, in Dundalk, replacing the Gen Y apartments. And that one, we're also planning to apply for some funding to make those net zero. And there is, there is funding for all of a lot of these projects if we do go to net zero. So that's, it's gonna be helpful in incentivizing these sorts of things. We've also done some equipment upgrades, some air source heat pumps went into Gray Roots, as well as some of the housing units. We're putting Energy Star appliances in some of the housing units as well, working with a company called ClearResult, and that's, that's had, had significant impact and was also funded. New building automation systems, certainly in the admin building in Gray Roots, Sidnum Campus, and those ones really give us a chance to understand more what's going on and have more control over how these buildings operate, and that's gonna make a huge, a huge difference. And then several lighting upgrades have happened. Lighting is almost always a really good return on investment. The payback is, is very short, and getting better lighting can have a huge impact and not and be, be a really great return. We've also done some energy assessments at Parkway and the Pines. Those are two of our big multi-unit residential units. There was some incentives for that. We intend to keep applying for those incentives. We get, basically, they can be done for free with the incentives. So as long as we can continue to get those incentives, we can get any juice audits. We did an energy treasure hunt in the Sidnum and, and admin building, and that's really looking for operational and commissioning changes. Things like, can we, are the fans running at the right speed? Are the, are the pumps working at the optimum efficiency? Things that it's very easy to make those changes. You just need some, somebody to know what they're doing and change the settings, and it's not a, it's not a big capital improvement that's required to, to potentially make some significant energy performance enhancements. And we've also obtained about, you know, we've been talking about some incentives. It's, it's getting about forty-four, five from November to May 2024. And I recognize that there's definitely a lot of incentives were achieved before that, but this is when we've sort of started tracking our, our incentive tracker, which is something that Karen has been developing and has been instrumental in kind of getting us those incentives for these, some of these projects. Okay, and energy data management, I've been sort of hinting at this whole data situation, recognizing how important it is to have good data. So because we now have this position of a climate change data coordinator, who is, who is Karen, it's added significantly to our capacity to analyze the building energy data. And it's brought to light some gaps in our current energy data management system, particularly the manual entry of utility bills. The current, I won't get into the details, but the current system doesn't allow us to automate those, that data entry. So it means that, that there is a person who is looking at a pile of bills and typing numbers into a spreadsheet, which they are doing amazing job at. They are meticulous, they check things, but when you're talking about four hundred plus bills per month, errors do happen. And then we have to go back and find out where did that, where, what happened here? Was this a mistake? Was this just an anomaly in the data? Was this actually a change in usage? It it just eats up time because we're trying to figure out what what is happening. So with good data, we can make relatively simple adjustments to the building operations. It will have big costs, big impacts on costs and GHG savings. And this is what I was talking about, doing that uh red screen analysis of buildings, things like like peak demands, we can look at and see if there's something we can do just to reduce a peak that is costing us a lot of money. Uh, but when thus we have the data from the building that we know is good, we we can't can't do anything without the information. So investing in some an energy management solution to collect, store, verify, analyze the data would really increase the efficiency of our operations, reduce, reduce the uh errors and then provide information for staff and council to make good decisions about what we need to do in our buildings. So we're proposing that climate, finance, IT staff will work collaboratively to identify the solutions. What functionality does each department need? How will this integrate with other county systems? Make sure we come up with solution and and bring back some proposals for for that. Uh, there is energy software out there, other municipalities use it routinely. So it's just making sure that we we pick the one that's that's going to be the the best fit for our needs uh and across the departments that use this uh energy data. Okay, and and sort of along those lines, we've uh been selected or has have applied and been approved to participate in the ISO's Strategic Energy Management Program. This is the first time they're running a cohort that's specifically for municipalities. It's been offered for industry and and business um previously. Uh, but through this program, staff will receive training and support through the through their um their services. And it's an energy coach that will work with a cohort of other municipalities, including us uh over the next two years to really, really, we can put a magnifying glass on our energy management systems and try and really improve the processes by which we manage energy. So we're going to be working with collaboratively with staff and all of all of our other departments uh to to work with with our energy management uh practices to to really uh up our game in that regard. Uh, we have SEM milestones that are focused on energy management practices, and there are incentives for those, small amounts of money that we get along the way for hitting some of those milestones. And then there's also some incentives for energy efficiency measures that we will be implementing in our building. And as we implement some of those measures, we also can achieve some incentives, money from from implementing those measures. So it's a no-cost program. We get really great professional coaching and there's potential for us to get some financial savings and money out of it um as well. So uh, I'm really excited for the potential of this program uh for our for our energy management future. All right, so this is a sort of a quick, high-level look at at how we might be prioritizing our actions. And this is when we're starting to talk through our SEM coach about which buildings are we going to truly go after as our as our first uh order of business. You can see we're we're looking for buildings where we have a high degree of control over what happens in the building and how the energy is used as well as high energy consumers. So our sort of big five are are this building, Citadel Campus, Gray Roots Museum and Archives, Lee Manor, Great Gables, and then Rockwood Terrace. It's uh certainly the new, the new build probably won't need a lot of help. Uh, and the old building, we don't really want to be putting a lot of time and energy into investing in something that's that's not going to be, at least not going to be uh in its current usage uh for much longer. So that one is sort of in a in both categories. So those are our big five that we're really trying to trying to get folks on to begin with. Uh, and then the second one is these multi-unit residential apartments. They're they're large energy users, but we have less control because there there's there's tenants and we don't, we don't influence tenant behavior if they want to open windows and plug in all of their appliances. And we don't really have a lot of say in what how the building is used. Um, but they are large energy users, so there's still lots of things we can do in those spaces. And then up in the top up left there, there's the the buildings that are fairly low usage, but we have, we still have a lot of control because we are, they are operated by our staff. So EMS bases, transport depots, early years, center, Hanover Works Office, storage facilities. We have control over these, but they're not big energy users. And then our lowest priority are things like single-family residential units because again, we have very little control and they're individually, each unit is not a big contributor to to what uh what we're doing. Make sure I covered what I needed to. So, uh, yeah, and then when we're looking at what what we're addressing within these buildings, first, the first order of business is anything we can do with with behavior. So things like turning off lights, closing windows, turn like lowering and up upping down the the shades. Uh, and then things that are to do with commissioning, that's like, how is the building working? Is the furnace operating at optimum efficiency? Is the HVAC unit doing what it's supposed to do for ventilation? Is it getting the right amount of ventilation at the right time? These kinds of things that are tweaking the system doesn't cost us any capital improvements. It's just about making the system work right. And then capital improvements is sort of our last step in the in the process. And we'll, we'd be aligning those a lot with end of life. So if something is going to be replaced anyway, that's a really a great opportunity to to do that. Um, we also need to just sort of decide with these, within this um portfolio of buildings, which ones are we going to invest and which ones are we going to divest? So I can imagine like potentially over between now and twenty forty-five, some of these buildings may get sold. So it'd be good to know sort of which ones we're planning to keep and improve and which ones we may be planning to to just to just sell off. All right. Finally, this is wrapping it up here. I know this is a lot of information, so thank you very much for your patience. Uh, this is sort of our our immediate steps uh of what we're doing next. So energy consumption data for all buildings, including this hourly interval data whenever possible. So this is getting a handle on what is happening. And that will help us to complete this red screen analysis and modeling for all of the buildings. So this will include weather normalization of consumption data, then looking for trends, the impacts of various measures, identifying where operational savings can be can be achieved. Uh, that that's very helpful. Uh, and then regular building condition assessments and energy audits to really ground truth the energy consumption data. So if we're looking at, uh, we can be looking at what our utility bills are telling us, and then we can go back to the actual building and say, hey, we saw a change in March of twenty twenty-six. What actually happened in the building at that time? Why did this change happen? Did it get better? Did it get worse? What's what's happening? So this is going to be a real collaboration with our facilities and buildings managers because they are the ones who are in the ground, they know the buildings way better than anybody. And they can sort of give us some really on-the-ground insights to what's happening. And then we're creating those modeled net zero pathways. So getting the plan, uh, what, how do we get this building to net zero? Align that with a capital plan, make sure that things are are in the budget and that that need to happen. Make sure that we're not sort of boxing ourselves into high and highly consuming of GHGs and highly inefficient systems by sort of going on autopilot. Oh, this is a gas boiler, I need to buy another one. Making sure that we're having that conversation and understanding that if is there a better option? Could it, could something else happen in this in this plan that that was sort of not box us into a a high emission future? Um, and then modeling the impacts of potential potential capital improvements. And that can also be done in this in this red screens graph. We're looking for that return on investment. One of the ones, the projects that have uh that are going to save us money and energy very quickly, those are sort of a a really great thing to start with. Looking at things that potentially are 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 kind of neutral, like they're they're going to save us energy, but they have a a large upfront cost, looking for financial models to support some of that investment. Things like solar usually fall into that category. And then things that are are harder to justify from a cost perspective, looking at replacing those at end of life. So when it's, you have to replace it anyway because it's stopped working or it's it's at end of life, can we replace it with a more more green option? And then, of course, looking for opportunities to accelerate some of this work through external funding or financial models that would allow us to sort of make progress uh more quickly by taking advantage of those opportunities that are coming from other levels of government to sort of accelerate this this pathway. So that's what I have for you. Happy to take some questions. Uh, that was a lot to take in, so uh, yes, happy to respond to anything.
Thank you, Rebecca. Indeed, there was a lot of stuff in there. Any questions from council? Counselor Carlton?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Rebecca. That was a lot of information. One of my questions that arose that I thought of as you were going through, on the high energy consumption, low control with the multi-unit residential, are they metered individually that there would be a way to monitor each unit? And perhaps give incentives for the residents of those to decrease their usage?
That's a great question. And and in some cases, yes, it is um individually metered, and in some cases, it's not individually metered. Uh, one thing that we thought of is there is actually these um little meter devices that you can, it's a, it can be for home use and you can actually just plug it in between your stove and your outlet, and it will tell you what what the energy consumption is. And we are considering offering those as like a voluntary measure. So if people are interested and they want to know what kind of energy they're using as as a resident, uh, they could, they could sort of check it out from the tool library and go, we could go find out. Uh, there's also an opportunity to look at um occupancy because that can also really skew the data that we're looking at. Because, you know, clearly a building that has twelve units occupied versus eight units occupied is going to have a really different consumption. So we can look sort of to see, uh, you know, are are the variability in the usage? Is it based on who's living there or is it based on, well, there was just more occupancy in this building? And that's why the energy went up or down? So it's a lot of investigation that that uh that we're looking into.
Any other questions? Counselor Greg, and then Counselor Keveney.
Thanks for the informative material, uh, Rebecca. Only I have a question um regarding the time span. This is something that was created by the province in two thousand thirteen, and the reporting has to be submitted every five years. Uh, is there any discussion on, uh, you know, back then, you you don't know, you lay it out and you just ask municipalities to report every five years. But there's a lot, this was not written in an afternoon. And the shifts in the data, the results are really hard to gather just in five years unless they thought that municipalities were just awash in money and could just do everything overnight, which is very clearly um not the case. Um, so is there any discussion about advocating that this kind of reporting be done every ten years or extending it a little further out so that the results? It just looks like a lot of municipalities would spend time just chasing data uh as opposed to adequate timelines to reflect investment and actual change uh that's taken place. The five years just seems to be pretty short time span. So just wondering if there's any reflection by the province on, they laid it out there, uh, five years, and they're assessing perhaps, you know, what's what's ideal?
Good question. So I, so I'm not aware that the province is looking at changing uh these reporting requirements. Uh, I got to say that from from our perspective, we found this valid, this exercise incredibly valuable because it 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 forces us to take a good, hard look at what 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 do we know, what do we don't know? And we're coming out of this with a lot of really great questions that are going to help us to get to the bottom of why, why do our buildings behave the way they do? And without the provincial mandate, would this work have been done? Eventually, yes, but we've really kind of had to focus in and get get our ducks in a row to to meet the deadline for this report. And it's kind of given us, it's opened up a lot of questions about about the buildings and and our our ability to understand what's happening and to potentially make changes and to understand which ones are ahead of the curve and which ones are behind the curve. Uh, this is something I feel like we would like to do, if anything, more often because it really gives us that, the more we know about the buildings, the more we understand about how they're using um utilities, energy, how is how is this working? The better uh ability for us to to control that, both from the cost perspective and from a GHG perspective. So I think having the data and having the 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 reporting of the province is really secondary for me to the, to what we've achieved with this plan is really a a better understanding of our buildings, which is really, really valuable for us.
Counselor Keveney?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Rebecca. And it's wonderful that you're here at Gray County and that you have an opportunity to do this deep dive, which I know will uh bring great results and energy savings to the county. And I'm wondering if there will be any uh potential um opportunities to share some of your learning with the lower tiers because we don't all have climate change staff. And yet we want to uh find opportunities in our own buildings to uh improve energy efficiency. So I'm just wondering if some of your learnings could be shared with all of us.
Yes, absolutely. That's a, that's a great point. Uh, so some things obviously are specific to a particular building, but there are uh sort of overall principles that are applied to many of the different kinds of buildings we manage. Uh, I I mentioned the energy treasure treasure hunt that we did here at the admin building. Uh, that was a sort of a day-long workshop with a consultant uh who was specifically looking at this building, but also talking about buildings in general and getting a better, how to get a better understanding of what's happening. And there's actually an offer for anybody who attended that training, which includes several representatives from our member municipalities, to get a a follow-up coaching that is included in the offering from the ISO of a two hours per building coaching so that they can sort of deal with this same similar deep dive into a building that they're uh concerned about or that they would like more information on and work with this consultant to really understand, using the things that we learned sort of in general in this energy treasure hunt to uh to get a deeper dive and an understanding of of that uh of their own particular buildings. So happy to follow up with staff if uh if uh that would be nice. Okay.
Kim, you have something to add?
Um, I just wanted to, and Karen is sitting so quietly back there, and I really want to acknowledge him as well. Um, this what really was a tremendous effort. And my hope is that with council's support for the resolution before us here, which is looking into um some energy data management systems so that we can collect this kind of information and do the analysis in a much cleaner, more efficient and more effective way so that all of us can understand and we can better kind of align our future investments and requirements with our asset management plan and our capital plan would be a huge help. But um, I would be misstating if I said that Karen didn't have to comb through what could be described as a bit of a hot mess um with all the different bills and how complex they are and whether they reflect one building or several. And there is an awful lot of work to do on this file to help us do a better job of managing. And so thank you to um Rebecca and Karen and Randy for everything that went into this.
Thank you, Kim. Are there any other questions? Not seeing any, I will call a question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Rebecca, and thank you, Karen. Okay, uh, mindful of the time, it's five to twelve. Lunch, I understand, is going to be delivered about twelve or shortly. So I don't know whether we're going to get through all this before we adjourn for lunch, but we're going to give it a go. So uh, the next report is from the Clerks Department. Tara will be taking us through a report on corporate sponsorship policy. Someone care to move that, please? Counselor Pringle and Counselor Nielsen. Tara?
Sorry. Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. So this report um comes before you today seeking council's consideration and approval of a sponsorship policy. Um, so on occasion, Gray County does enter into sponsorship arrangements or agreements with businesses where Gray County is a recipient of either funds or in-kind contributions in exchange for recognition or other promotional considerations. So there's been a need identified by staff to have a corporate policy that oversees and guides staff when they're considering these sponsorship opportunities, as we currently don't have one. The draft policy is attached for your feedback and consideration. It outlines the proposed criteria for approval restrictions where we wouldn't accept a sponsorship and thresholds where an agreement is required versus where a more informal arrangement may be appropriate. Staff hope to have this policy in place for the June twenty-seventh meeting, as there is anticipated to be a sponsorship opportunity coming forward at that time for council's consideration. So the policy is there for your your review and feedback, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Tara. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Thanks, Tara. Can you uh provide any examples of corporate sponsorships that we have taken on in the last number of years? I'm just trying to get a a sense of what this may look like.
Yeah, I'd ask Savannah to answer that question for you.
Thank you very much to you, Mr. Warden. In the past, at Gray Roots especially, we often get sponsorships for events uh so that we'll have a a host sponsor to help cover some of the cost of an event. Uh, we've also had large ones towards buildings and naming rights. So uh, a couple of years ago, we had a sponsorship of twenty thousand dollars to name Zeus's Place, which is our children's gallery at Gray Roots. Uh, we had forty thousand dollar sponsorship last year um for the Arna general store um for naming rights there as well. So they range anywhere from a couple hundred dollars for even Um, for the Arna General Store um for naming rights there as well. So they range anywhere from a couple hundred dollars for events. Up to tens of thousands of dollars at this point in time.
Counselor Matrasos.
Thank you through you, uh, the warden. I just wanted to ask it just to clarifying a question with regards to item three point two and the restrictions. It for, it refers to beer uh that that an ex, an exception could be beer slash wine. And slash or cedar cider of a local nature. So I have two questions for that. Um, one is of a local nature. It's kind of broad. So I just wondered whether or not we could actually just. Put our stamp on it as we've heard about all the successes and the innovation we have here in Gray County and say within Gray County. And and just make it a full stop there. But I would also like the the consideration of uh to include. Uh, that it could be spirits as well because we have Spy cider hi, house and distillery, which is producing right. Here in Gray County, right in the Blue Mountains, actually making their own stuff and selling their own stuff. On their organic farm, um vodka, gin, liqueurs. So I would like to make sure that we encourage. That. Thank you.
Who wants to take a run at that?
Thank you for the questions through you, Mr. Warden. I think that it makes sense to be able to locate it here. In some cases, depending on partnerships that we have, we may want to say Gray Brew Simco, just in keeping with our regional tourism organization. Um, and to add spirits would make sense because we are starting to see some of those. Uh, so that is a good catch. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Savannah. Any other questions? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Uh, is carried. Thank you, Tara, and thank you, Savannah. Uh, the next report is uh going to be. Sorry? Uh, might be, might not be. It's Becky that's going to take us through it. Senior Planner. He's going to talk about a Gray County Official Plan Amendment, a potential amendment regarding Forbes Quarry Expansion. Motion or someone to move that, please. Counselor Carlton and Counselor Mackey. Becky. Full disclosure, we're we're saving Scott for almost lunch.
Hello, good morning, everyone. Uh, my name is Becky Hillier. Yes, cognizant that I'm taking Scott's traditional role of standing between everyone and lunch today, but I'll try to keep this quick. Uh, so I just wanted to present a a quick overview of a recent county official plan amendment that we we received. Uh, we're, we are referring to it as OPA nineteen or the Forbes Quarry Expansion. Uh, and it's just a high-level overview of Report PDR CW thirty-two dash twenty-four. Uh, so we have received an OPA. It was submitted by Dawn and Tony Forbes through Coesta Planning Consultants. Uh, and the applicants are proposing to adjust land use permissions on an existing property. Uh, to expand a quarry operation that currently exists on the, on those lands. Uh, the OPA would expand the designated mineral resource extraction area shown in Schedule B of our county official plan. From approximately twelve point five hectares, which currently exists to permit that existing quarry. To eighty-seven point eight five hectares. And of that new extraction area, approximately fifty-six point eight eight hectares is proposed to actually be for. The extraction of that bedrock resource. Uh, so at this time, a related zoning bylaw amendment has also been submitted to the township of Georgian Bluffs. And that's being pro- processed concurrently with this OPA. Um, and a joint public meeting has been scheduled for July tenth um at the township office. Uh, at this time, notice has been provided to all neighbors and agencies in accordance with the Planning Act and signage has been erected on the site. Um, but I would just stress that um at this time, we've, we've really only taken sort of a high-level, very cursory overview of the material. So we haven't had that fulsome review uh process yet and we haven't collected all of those comments. Um, the applicants are also going through a simultaneous process to secure licensing for the uh quarry operation through the province. Uh, under the uh Aggregate Resources Act and uh the applicants have uh kind of, they started initially with that process. Uh, they've, to my understanding, have already done um a round of of public engagement, including a public meeting through that process as well. Uh, and collected some agency comments in, including initial comments through the county last year. So in terms of the location of the subject lands, uh, this is a a topographic image. Uh, showing the the boundary of the entire um subject area. It's actually composed of three specific properties. Um, so on the east boundary there, uh, that is kind of aligning with his uh Zion Church Road. And the southern frontage uh has frontage on concession seventeen. Uh, oh, and sorry, I'll, I'll just give you a little bit, a few more landmarkers there. So directly to the south there, that uh. Forested area is a county-owned forest property, um actually known as the quarry. Um, and to the uh southwest, there is another quarry operation um of a much smaller scale currently operating down there. Uh, and to the east, it's about one point point five kilometers to um Mountain Lake. So the lands are legally described as lot seven, eight, nine, part of ten of concession eighteen uh in the previous geographic township of Kepel. As I mentioned, there uh the lands consist of three separate properties uh in total, and in total, they're about a hundred and have seventy hectares in size. Uh, the eastern property contains a single residential house, barn, accessory structures. And those uses or structures are proposed to be maintained and they would be outside of that extraction area. Uh, the southern property is very small. It contains an existing single, single residential house. Uh, that house is proposed to be removed so that extraction can occur under that house. Uh, the western property contains the existing quarry operation and appears to be partially used for agricultural pur- purposes. In addition to having a large forested area. Uh, so this is the sort of um roughly what the proposed amendment looked like. So that a. Uh, stripy area to the bottom in red, that shows the boundary of the existing quarry. Uh, and then the stripe area in purple is the proposed ex- expansion of that quarry. So just a few details of uh kind of what that extraction process would entail. Uh, so currently, the existing quarry is licensed to extract about a hundred thousand tons. Uh, of material per year maximum. Um, and that is proposed to be maintained through the current um. Ex- extension of of the quarry area. Uh, so that means that there shouldn't be more uh sort of trucks or or noise. Happening as a result of this expansion um compared to what currently exists on the property. Um, extraction is proposed below the water table, which is similar to uh what's currently occurring on site as well. Um, no blasting is proposed. So um that means it, some, a lot of quarries now, they. Uh, they will do sort of monthly blasting. Um, but I understand that that's not the case here. Uh, they, I think they have some sort of um cutting saw and and hammer system that they're looking to use rather than blasting. So. Um, the the uh effects of vibration, I think, um would be less significant than a blasting situation. Um, it's anticipated over the um entire lifespan of the quarry. About twenty-one hectares of forested area would need to be removed uh in order for extraction to occur. Um, extraction is proposed in phases with each stage being progressive progressively rehabilitated. Uh, so that means that essentially the the property would be sectioned off and um. Extraction would occur in one area and then once that material is depleted, that area would be uh rehabilitated before the, the. Um, operators would move on to a different area of the property. Uh, the zoning amendment submitted to the township is proposing to use the existing quarry area to process material on site. Uh, while also acknowledging the existing office use and accessory structures that are part of the current quarry operation. So from my understanding, they are already crushing gravel uh on the the main quarry site and that's proposed to continue. So as noted, um, this is requiring a county OPA as well as a township uh zoning bylaw amendment. Um, the county's official plan provides policy direction for. Um, any new quarry operation or expansion, uh she'll have to go through a county official ma- plan amendment process. Uh, this is slightly different than when someone comes forward to apply for a gravel pit operation. Um, the difference here is that the county has um certain mapping that shows where. Uh, high-quality gravel resources exist. Um, and so we generally, if someone's operating in those areas, they don't acquire official plant. However, we don't have the same level of mapping for uh quarries. And so those do require an official plan amendment. So in terms of some key policy considerations uh that we will be continuing to review through this uh proposal as as we start that. Uh, more in-depth technical review. Um, so the provincial policy statement provides some general jet. Uh, directions to protect mineral resources for future extraction operations. Um, as well, uh similar to our official plan, um uh provides a lot of direction around natural heritage features. Um, including significant um woodlands, wetlands, uh species habitat. Um, as well as protecting local water supplies. The county's official plan maps the subject lands as rural and hazard lands in Schedule A of the county's official plan. Um, so that is to say that we're not recognizing this property as being within a prime agricultural area. Um, although it does occur, it does appear that there is agricultural activity happening on a portion of the property. Um, it's also mapped as mineral resource extraction area in Schedule B, noting that permission for the existing quarry. Um, within uh Schedule C, it's designated, a portion of the property is designated as being a core area and linkage. And so that mapping is um considered to be some of our most ecological, significant. Uh, features throughout the county, um where we have these uh large contiguous areas of forests or wetland. That provide these uh really key ecological habitats for some of our species. Um, in this case, there is no extraction or licensed area expanding into the core area. However, it would occur in the linkage. And so the linkage is is sort of the um mapped areas that are are kind of. Uh, mapped out to roughly connect in the shortest distance are are large core areas. So in this case, the the linkage would connect southwards to the the county forest property, just to provide that uh. Habitat movement corridor between those core areas. Uh, there's various other natural heritage features on the site as well, including unevaluated wetlands, significant woodlands and and water features. And large portions of the property do fall within a cursed area per appendix A. So at this time, um, as noted, we will be continuing a a high-level. Or sorry, a more in-depth technical review of a lot of the reports that have been submitted by the applicants to date. Uh, including some of the comments uh that have been submitted by provincial ministries. Um, but at this time, we're, we're just putting forth a general recommendation uh to receive uh this report for information.
Thank you, Becky. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Apples.
Thank you. You mentioned that they were going to stay within the hundred thousand ton. What does it take to increase that? At any time during the production?
Yes, thank you. Um, so my understanding is that it would require another license approval process through the province. I don't believe it would. Retrigger um a county official plan amendment or a zoning bylaw amendment, but it would require an additional review process. Under the Aggregate Resources Act.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'll call a question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Becky. Lunch is here. What would council like to do? We have uh. Two more matters to deal with. We have a closed meeting and we have a verbal update on Bill one eighty-five. Lunch? We can promise to do it in ten minutes. We'll uh. We'll, we'll press on. Unless somebody, well. We're going to press on. Closed meeting matters. Motion is that the committee to hold not does now going to close session pursuant to section two thirty-nine of the municipal act as amended to discuss. Labor relations or employee negotiations, specifically bargaining update, OPSU, Gray Gables and Lee Manor. Someone care to move that, please? Counselor Matrasos, Counselor Patterson. All those in favor? That is carried. So we'll just take a moment to uh. Okay, I got the thumbs up from Olivia. Thank you very much. I can report that we only discussed those items in camera. That were listed on the in-camera agenda. Other business, we have a verbal update from Scott Taylor uh regarding Bill one eighty-five, cutting red tape to build more homes act two thousand twenty-four. Scott.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden, and and good afternoon, Warden and members of county council. Some of you may have heard a version of this update at uh at the PDAC yesterday, so I'll keep this brief. Uh, committee may recall that on May ninth, we had a report that was providing uh comments on both Bill one eighty-five and the draft two thousand twenty-four provincial planning statement. Uh, Bill one eighty-five has now received royal assent and we're still waiting on a decision from from uh the province on the provincial planning statement. Uh, there were some comments flagged in that report where the county was supporting changes that the province was uh considering through one, Bill one eighty-five. And there were some other areas where we raised some concerns or s- suggested some further changes. Uh, since the time we submitted our comments through that May ninth report, there were some changes made to the legislation as it stood before we commented. Um, prior to it receiving royal assent. Most notably, those changes dealt with uh. Uh, appeal rights for official plans, official plan amendments, zoning bylaws and zoning bylaw amendments. The province has added some new bodies that could consider appealing those, including uh Nav Canada Airport Authorities or licensed pits and quarries. Within three hundred meters of a uh uh official plan or zoning amendment. Uh, the other change they've made is is to clarify that registered owners can now appeal an official plan or a new comprehensive zoning bylaw. So if you were passing a new zoning bylaw in your municipality and somebody had participated throughout the public process, they could appeal that zoning bylaws that pertain to their property. However, uh those same people or or however, neighbors cannot appeal official plan or zoning amendment. So if we look at uh. Uh, Becky's report from a few minutes ago, if if somebody was looking to potentially as a neighbor, appeal that quarry operation. Uh, under the the new provisions under Bill one eighty-five, they would no longer be able to. Uh, there are, is also some retroactivity to this in that uh third-party appeals for these files that were in process prior to April tenth. But hadn't received a hearing date yet now are dismissed. Uh, with respect to some of the other Bill one eighty-five changes, um, the province kept in the portions about proponents now being able to appeal. Um, settlementary boundary expansion refusals. So if you had uh somebody coming to your municipality asking for an official plan amendment to to expand a settlement area. And and your council refused that, uh, the proponents can now appeal that decision, whereas previously they couldn't. Um, when we look at these, these appeal right changes, um, i- it it seems to be this, the settlementary boundary one. Is the one that's generating the most discussion uh in the media, amongst farm groups, amongst uh environmental groups, climate action committees. Uh, in that there's a worry that uh that this will lead to more sprawl and and inefficient development in that regard. Uh, some of the other changes speak to pre-submission consultation processes now being voluntary. That can also be. Uh, so uh um referred to the tribunal even before we have an application. Uh, there's some further regulation-making authority as it pertains to additional residential units, parking minimums and community service facilities. Um, thankfully, from a staff perspective, uh, the the mandatory fee refunds that were first instituted through Bill one eight, one oh nine have been removed. Uh, so in our opinion, that's a good news story for for municipalities because there were fee refunds for both zoning amendments. And uh site plan amendments in that regard. Uh, there've been some changes to the Development Charges Act uh that were generally supported by council and staff, including removing the mandatory phase in. For a new DC study and bylaw, uh, capital studies are now added back as an eligible cost. Um, so those are all positive. The county had suggested through our comments that they consider adding in back. Back in social housing as a DC collectible charge, uh, but this change was not made. And then finally, there were some changes made to the municipal act with respect to servicing allocation bylaws. And new circumstances under which the minister could could issue regulations with respect to bonusing. Uh, we generally didn't have any concerns with respect to the servicing allocation bylaws. Uh, the bonusing, we did raise some comments with and and. Asked for very clear guidelines if the province was going to pursue that because that gets into potentially a shaky ground in that regard. Um, with that, uh, staff will continue to monitor these changes, including any implementing regulations. As well as the passing of the future provincial planning statement and we will keep council advised accordingly. Uh, certainly happy to take any questions, but the purpose was was more or less just to give an update.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any questions on the update? Okay. Oh, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Scott, from all the consultation that the province did with member municipalities, were there any significant changes based on the input that was provided by municipalities? Did governments weigh it all in their final draft?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Sometimes it's tough to know how the sausage is made. I'll, I'll say that, that the, the most notable change is, is those changes to appeal rights. I'm not sure if that was as a result of, of municipal industry, other comments or, or, or comments from, from some of their political colleagues in that regard, but that, that was the most notable change that we've been able to track. Bill 185 did change another, a number of other pieces of legislation which, which the county chose not to comment on because they didn't specifically impact county interest in that regard. So I'm not sure if there's further changes made there. With respect to those appeals, we're hearing some commentary that, that some of the changes were really targeted at making sure there was limited appeal rights. But that, that, that there might not be appeal rights for, for industry lobby groups or ratepayers associations, which is why they've added in this new registered owner term. So only owners can appeal. There's also some speculation online that it could have unintended consequences in that previously, if you were a tenant, you could appeal something. Now it would appear in those situations, only registered owners can. So again, I guess I kind of danced around your question in terms of whether or not municipal feedback shaped these changes. I'm, I'm not 100% sure, but those, those are the most notable changes we could find.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Just one moment, please. Please hold. Okay. Any notices to the motion? Counselor Body?
Thank you, Warden Melon. I will bring a motion at our next meeting in June 27, 2024 to request a consideration or for consideration to request the staff report regarding options of funding for court security costs.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's duly noted. Any other notices, motion? Okay. I need one more motion to adjourn. Counselor McQueen? Counselor Apples? All those in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you.